Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we're operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask Mr Waddell to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. As indicated, I'll now take a roll call for the minute and I would ask if members would confirm they are present when I call their names. Convener?
Present.
And I've received apologies from Bailey Raitt and I believe that councillor Malone is attending as her substitute. Is councillor Malone present?
Yeah, I'm present.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson?
Good afternoon, present.
And I've received apologies from Bailey Scott. Deputy Lord Provost Cordell?
Present.
Thank you. Bailey Roberts?
Present.
Thank you councillor O'Nackla?
Hi, I'm present.
Thank you councillor Short.
I'm here.
Okay, thanks very much. That concludes the roll call. Item one before his declarations of interest. It's for not any members of any declarations to the content of the agenda as it stands. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convener. Just to say in relation to item three, a family member is a member of Staffordball Dragon Academy.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay then, Willie? Okay, thank you, convener. Item two then before his HMI inspection of Claypots Castle Primary School. You're asked to read the recommendations. This is May. Looking for to say a few words on the report to start with.
Thank you, convener, yes. So this report follows a full inspection in April twenty-three of Claypots Castle Primary School. And we received the report on this inspection in June of twenty-three. And this this follows a full inspection of the school by HMI. And when I say a full inspection, that's that we look at all four quality indicators across the school. And so overall, you'll see it's a very positive report with grades, a mix of very good and goods. And really important for us that one of the very good grades is for leadership change. And that brings us reassurance and confidence that the school is will continue to grow from strength to strength. And also, especially post-pandemic, very important to see a very good grade in terms of ensuring wellbeing, equality and inclusion. And so we know that these are areas that we need to support our children and our young people and our families around. And five strengths highlighted in at section four point five. So great to see that that strength of community in the school and the environment welcomed as a strength. Always a joy to see the children being mentioned themselves as the strength of the school. And again, that reassurance around the effect of leadership of the head teacher and the deputy and the team there. So all in all, a really positive report. And as as with all scrutiny though, there's always room for improvement and quite rightly so. So you'll see there's a couple of improvement areas highlighted at section four point seven. So in 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 most inspections now across Scotland, you'll see the word consistency. We know we've got high quality learning and teaching across our schools, but there's always a need to continue to develop that consistency across the board. And and that's one of the areas that the school are looking at and also to further develop. So even the word further in there is really important that they're already on a great journey in terms of tracking at their children's learning, but to further develop that, to monitor it more closely. So all of which will feature as part of the school's improvement plan going forward. We're fortunate today to have Nicky Murray able to be with us on the call, the head teacher. And we've also obviously got my chief education officer, Paul Fleming, who are here to answer any specific questions. Thank you, convener.
Yeah, looks like Bailey McPherson and to start with her comment.
Thanks indeed, convener. It's simply a comment to say this is an absolutely excellent report. I completely agree with all the comments of of Mrs May. And I think it plays testimony to just how good a report is, is that many of the actions start with the word continue or build on. So in other words, although there are things to continue and build on, these are things that are already underway. So, you know, I have to say, very impressed with that. I hope the committee would agree that we should maybe ask Mr Murray if he can, in addition to passing our thanks to him personally, but also to his team at Claypots Castle for absolutely excellent work that they're doing. And this is very much, I would say, convener, a report that gladdens the heart. Thank you.
Thanks for these comments and I'm sure that others would echo them as far as passing that on to the rest of the staff. I'm going to bring in councillor Lynne for a comment as well.
Oh, that scares me. Councillor Lynne is a very different prospect. And I am, I just wanted to to come in to say how incredible it was to actually read that the parents have a very positive view on the impact that the schools have on their child sometimes. And the to buy and with the parents is very difficult. So it's great to see that. And and also the fact that you probably might be modest, but I saw it in the in the telly. I believe that you may have won a national competition when it comes to reading. So so that's really excellent news. And you had a visit from the the first minister recently, I believe, and perhaps the the education secretary. So you're certainly highfalutin out there in Claypots. And the other part of it is that I believe this is going to be a really interesting and sort of example of how we go with our young people in the city. And because your your primary ones effectively now will have come to you in a city where the V and A was just opening. And all they've heard about are all these various things about the culture of the city. They're moving through their school and life. And by the time they hit their secondary school, they will be in the East End campus. So there's a huge investment in these young people. And to see the parents already recognising that, and I really genuinely hope that the 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 young people and are are also recognising that they're very special and we want them to have the very best that we can offer as a city. And you know how you get these seven and up and about children at different sort of spaces in their life? And it would be really good to see if there was something that we could do with the young people from Cape Hearts going into East End Campus. And I mean, obviously, it's not something that you can say you are nay to at this point, but you're obviously doing something really well and we should capture it and see if it can be replicated. Although I believe, Mr Murray, you are replicated. I thought you were running it to schools at one point. But you're a twin head teacher. But there you go. You learn something new every day. But thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that. Mr Murray, would you want to say any comment, given the fact we've brought you along?
Well, thank you for inviting me along today. What I would say is thanks and I'll pass on your your kind comments to the rest of the staff because it is a staff endeavour. I think one of the unique features of the way we went about our work was involving the community right at the very inception of our planning. And so we started working from the community plan, which is quite novel and unique. And normally it's from a school perspective, but we started to look at the community first. And then there was a lot of indications that the community consultation had said there was a lack of physical, social, emotional support in the community. And so we tried as best we could to develop co-designed partnerships that extended into the community centres. And we have continued that work with different partnerships like the NHS, allotments, the local libraries. And I think that's genuinely been one of the most pleasing parts of the plan that is owned by everyone. And I think that's definitely a model worth sharing. And I think I'll continue to do that with the backing of the parents as well. So yeah, thank you for inviting me today.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. And thanks, thanks for your comments because, you know, it gives us another understanding of what's going on in our schools directly from the head teacher. So, you know, I do hope that the 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 model that you've adopted is looked at by others. Because obviously the results have certainly worked and we will want kids to have the best. It is about trying to get it right for every child. And I know that's difficult for, given the the sort of climate that we operate in at the moment, but we've got to try our best. So thanks very much. And plus, the committee's good wishes on the rest of the staff.
Thank you.
This report agreed? Okay, right, Mr Waddell? Thanks, convener. That takes on to item three, HMI inspection of Bull Dragon Academy. You're asking the recommendations. This is May. Looking to say a few words here again.
Yes, thank you, convener. And so this report follows a different model of inspection known as the short model. So HMI visited Bull Dragon Academy in January of this year. And we received this report in June as well. So when we talk about a short model, it means that the the team are in for a less of a time, although this was a disrupted week due to industrial action anyway. But they only look at two quality indicators. So the two quality indicators that are looked at are learning, teaching, assessment and raising attainment, raising achievement. As a result, this inspection model, we believe, does not capture the full picture of the improvement journey that this school has been on. In fact, we fed that back to HMI Education Scotland. We don't think the short model really does justice to any school. So obviously, the two grades are very disappointing here, if weak and unsatisfactory. And and we're challenged by the service, but our assessment would be that the real major strengths in this school actually sit in the two quality indicators that were not inspected. So I think it's important to put that on record. So leadership of change, which we see as a strength there and and the wellbeing, equality and inclusion, which has been a very sharp focus for this school. So that doesn't mean to say though that we don't take seriously the feedback from HMI and the areas that need to continue to improve. So and that's been addressed and is already underway. But still worth mentioning that even within a disappointing inspection, the two strengths that are mentioned there in section four point eight, really important to headline. You know, the the strengths of the head teacher, the senior leadership team and and the majority of the staff really having a good understanding of of the community and the young people that they care for every day. And and lovely to see that those are most vulnerable children in our community and enhanced support area. And seeing the strength of the care for those children there, really important to see as a strength. And of course, the other thing that we know about Bull Dragon Academy is the huge amount of partnerships that have been built over the last few years to to provide huge opportunities for young people. And in fact, following on councillor Lynne's approach, even if you saw STV news on Monday night, you would have seen some of the the young people from Bull Dragon talking about their beekeeping and partnership with Dundee Science Centre and the V and A. So major strengths there. And they would have been captured under a full inspection, I'm sure. However, we need to look to the areas of improvement and and their listed and cover the points around raising aspirations, expectations for the school, focus on attendance and late coming, which continues to be a challenge post pandemic across the country, I have to say, not just in Bull Dragon. Get that quality again across learning and teaching across the whole school. Absolutely need to improve attainment in the senior phase. And in order to do that, we need to support better monitoring and tracking of our learners' progress. So all of which I have to say is well underway and central to the school's improvement plan going forward. However, because of these grades of weaken unsatisfactory, HMI will make return visits to the school. And actually, the first of those return visits is next Tuesday. So we'll have a visit then and then there'll be a follow-up visit in December. So I have to say, we're looking forward to these visits because we want to be able to demonstrate and show the progress in that improvement plan so far and the green shoots that are already there and the plans to continue to improve. So again, fortunate today to have the head teacher, Mr Mackeninch, you Mackeninch on the call. Also, we have the chair of the parent council, Mary O'Connor, who is well-known to many of you. She also has a a national role in the National Parent Forum and is a great supporter of the school and the community. And also again, Paul Fleming, our chief education officer is here if you've got specific questions. Thank you, convener.
Okay, thanks for that. I must put the record straight and say it's no councillor Lynne that's here today. It's councillor Lynne Short. It's me that made the gaff to start me. So we'll we'll correct that. So the I'm going to open up then for comments. So I've got Bailey McPherson first, please.
Thanks indeed, convener. And I should first of all say, I I concur with the comments that Mrs May has made, particularly in relation to the way that Education Scotland approached this particular inspection. The timing immediately after the festive season, time of industrial action. And as Mrs May correctly alludes to, the short model only covering two quality indicators. And I also feel as well that the although the quality indicator scoring was very disappointing, I think, and it's summarised actually on page nineteen of our papers, the very significant areas of strength that Bull Dragon shows. And and therefore, I I view the the way this has been approached by Education Scotland as, quite frankly, a little bit disappointing. And I'm hoping that we will see through the return visits, both next week and and the substantive one a little bit later on, we will see the areas of strength to the school and the progress that the school is making being evidenced and and shown to Education Scotland. Now, I've got a particular question and it will not come as a surprise either to yourself, convener, or to Mrs May, because I had previously suggested it in both your company. And I I and that is, I think, and and it's not something we ordinarily do. But I feel that it would be helpful if Mr Mackeninch and his colleagues were agreeable. If those members of the scrutiny committee who wished to visit the school and to see what's going on in action at Bull Dragon, to see all the positives at the school. I think that would be, I would very much appreciate that. I think it would be very, very useful indeed. So that's my question basically. But my fundamental point is, I think there are a lot of strengths at Bull Dragon Academy. And I'm hoping that through the return visits of Education Scotland, that can come fully to the fore in relation to follow-up report.
I would have no problem in in sort of agreeing to your request, providing the staff can fit that in at some stage. But we'll likely hear from them at some stage on that as to whether that's got any possibility. I'll bring councillor Lynne Short in.
Like short money and then short models, it's very bad to be a short this afternoon. I'm struggling. And I have obviously had and read this report and a little bit of it was sort of outside my knowledge of what happens at Bull Dragon, because I certainly know that I've got my local head teacher, Mr Lothian, he's got me running all over the place to see where we can put his bees. And and I know that I'm sitting here with Judy from Legend Culture. And the elements of the sports model that's happening within Bull Dragon is incredible. And we only need to look further on in the report and look at the relationships that are there within Police Scotland and Bull Dragon, supporting the people in the area. And this is an area of the city where there is huge emphasis and supporting from everything from planet youth through to, you know, I mean, I'm not going to hide the fact that there was headlines last year and with regards to this area. So it's an area where it must be tough. And, you know, Hugh, I hope you don't mind me saying, calling you Hugh, but to deliver what you deliver is fantastic. And it can be difficult. And sometimes we're not always, always perfect, a hundred percent. And I say that right now as one of your local elected members. I don't get it right all the time, but I don't have inspectors coming in at the last minute, coming in, looking over my shoulder. And if I did and somebody said, oh, you've done that wrong again, Lyn, allude to it. And I put a plan in place to try not to do it again. So basically, my long and short of it with regards to our question is, Mrs May talked about a plan. And Hugh, could you maybe give us a wee indication of what the plan is with regards to what will happen next Tuesday and also in December, when the inspectors come in? And perhaps a little bit from Mary, as a parent, what your reflections are? And is this what you recognise from the school and your community, please?
Which we want to take them in the order they were asked for then. We'll take Hugh first now.
Yeah, and thank you very much. Yeah. So next Tuesday will be basically a check-in visit to see how we're progressing with our plan, given light of the summary of inspection findings and indeed the inspection reports. And to help us prepare for further inspection as we go into term two.
Yeah. Mary, you let me say a few words?
Okay. Hi, everybody. Thanks for inviting me along. Did I recognise the school that was in the report? No, I didn't. It's copy said. Um, I've got three kids at Bull Dragon. They're now S two, S four and S six. So at the time, when it was when they were going through, my oldest was obviously an S five, so he was doing his hires. We knew exactly where he was. We knew exactly, you know, what he was tracking for in his hires. And the teachers, all amazing support for him. And it showed in his results, to be fair, come come August. So, you know, I I don't particularly recognise what they say about the school. And I know there is a focus on attainment. My my now S four, he's feeling the national five, not the pressure, but he's feeling the the jump up to, you know, to start says exams to buckle down effectively and actually get on with it and prove he can, you know, he has got a brain in there somewhere. And not that he's got any pressure at all from his big brother yet, you know, but there we go. And he's not competitive at all either. So, you know, this is going to be fun come August. And and, you know, as for my, well, S one, now S two, she's in the school of sport, absolutely loves it. It's fantastic. Mind you, who wouldn't like to play football, you know, for a couple of hours on a Friday afternoon? Anything's got to be better than being in a class, isn't it, an S one? And but no, I mean, the things that are going on are absolutely brilliant. The Bee Academy is awesome. I've been to visit the academy with some of my young scouts, so squirrels, so four to six-year-olds. So we've been up to visit the hives a couple of times and the guys up there are absolutely brilliant. And the Barista Academy do a mean hot chocolate, it's got to be said. You know, they're great. And just the kind of variety of stuff that's there for all the kids to, you know, that they're able to access. They're able to access learning in a different way. And, you know, for the traditional exam routes is not for everybody and it's finding that way. And and I think Bull Dragons kind of, you know, leading the way at trying to kind of crack the nut of how to get those folk, you know, through the system and, you know, get them out the other end with the the best results that they can. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for these comments. Councillor O'Nackla, sorry. Councillor O'Nackla.
Thanks. And yeah, I can only imagine how disappointing the report must be. And it's difficult when you don't maybe your experience doesn't reflect what you're reading. And I think I have to ask, you know, I understand that reports will come back. But if you had identified two or three kind of key strategies or improvements that you have in place and well, sorry, in plan to be placed to make the necessary improvements, like what would you say, what would you say those were?
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much. So I would break things into three key priorities. So the first one is about raising our ambition and aspiration. And that goes from within the classroom and right across our learning community. And for us, that's around making young people feel good about being in school, want to come to school and want to be the best version of themselves when they're in school, so that they can succeed and to go on to whatever whatever pathway in their in their lives and beyond school. So absolutely that preparation in terms of skills for learning, life and work. Our second key area would be to continue to develop our approaches to improving learning, teaching and assessment. So we know that we know that the best, you know, results for higher are built in the BGE, the broad general education. So we're taking a real focus on the 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 process of learning and teaching, young people's experiences. And, you know, timous, timious assessment and to make sure that young people are in the right place for learning and getting their their experiences built on, so that as they progress through the BGE into the senior phase, they're well-equipped for whatever shape and form examinations may take for them. So working with a variety of partners, both within Dundee and externally, and to develop our staff through a programme of modelling, through a programme of best practice, and through models of where where best practice exists within the school and teachers getting an opportunity to share that with each other as well. The third key priority would be around raising attainment. So whilst bees and school sport and stuff is absolutely fantastic, you know, that's just one strand. And we want to make sure that every young person gets a gets a go at their qualifications in a way that that works for them. So we we recognise, you know, our our key performance indicators at higher. We recognise our, you know, STQF levels for literacy and numeracy. So working to improve learning and teaching will ultimately have a knock-on effect on young people's attainment. And that that then becomes a third priority.
Looking to come back in?
Yeah, no, I I think that's that's, you know, those three key plans are vital. And I'm really pleased to hear that there'd be partnership working within there. And that what you said about the right place, like making sure that children are getting to the right place, the right pathways. Because, you know, there's so, as as you're working with such difficult circumstances where not everyone has a loving care at home. You know, they're coming to school with a lot of adversity. And it's yet to making sure that the time that that you have them in that place that is well-equipped. And I think that's what really I was really pleased to hear you see well-equipped, to say, sorry, well-equipped. I think that's that kind of hits the nail on the head. So yeah, I look forward to 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 seeing how it goes and for the next report. So thank you for answering that.
Good. I'm going to be asked this sort of question myself. I can see that there is there is strengths in the report and I see that there is you know, considerable strengths in the school. And, you know, we're arguing about, you know, perhaps an inspection that was done not the best of things. But we have received a report that suggests we're unsatisfactory and weak. And so this, the question to the authority and lead officers would be, you know, we're meant to know how well our school is, how good is our schools? So how have we not managed to pick these things up early enough so as to make a real difference? Because this has got to have an effect on the staff that we've got, you know, and a potential effect on parents if they're thinking, well, should we go to that school or should go to some other? You know, so how how have we got to the stage where, you know, we're no suggesting that these weak and unsatisfactory are wildly inaccurate. You know, we're suggesting there's a lot of strengths in the school. But how have we got to the stage where picking up reports like this?
Thanks, convener. I'm going to ask our chief education officer to come in and talk about our quality assurance framework and how that works. Thank you.
Thank you, convener, for the for the question. Thanks, Audrey. And we have in the how good is our school four framework, where we benchmark our performance against, which we quality sure against. We have fifteen quality indicators. So there's a number of different areas. So as Audrey mentioned, even in an inspection, there's four QIs. And there are fifteen in total, which we benchmark against and quality sure against. So we have information on every single establishment. And I see our education manager of schools is on the call and our education officers who visit the schools. We have our school improvement framework, every Dundee learning matters. And we have provide proportionate support depending on where a school is in that journey. And of course, that journey can change depending on which quality indicator you're looking at and during a period of time when we undertake a contextual analysis, convener. So we do have information and we provide universal targeted and intensive support at various times. What inspectors would say is that they inspect a snapshot, so it is a snapshot in a period of time and it can change. We have identified as the head teacher has outlined that the school does need to improve its attainment. And it does need to do that through improving the quality of learning and teaching. So we have always known that and the head teacher had plans in place to do that. Of course, during the week that the inspectors came, that the inspectors judged that those were weak and unsatisfactory. So as a result of that and as a result of our own quality assurance processes, we are looking and have looked since January to strengthen. And the support for the school as we would do through our quality assurance processes irrespective of an inspection. So for example, we've another, a number of other schools where they've not been inspected externally. But through our quality assurance processes, we have strengthened support and put in targeted support where our. Quality assurance has shown that we need to do that. So we do respond at various times, Convenor. To the evidence in front of us and strengthen support as we have done in this instance.
Suppose if you knew your schools had that level of quality assurance and evidence to back that. Then you would argue about the position to put you in, in a snapshot. So there's an acceptance of where we are. So what would we do differently? If this is, if this is happening in another school to prevent. A weak and an unsatisfactory for another group of teachers, staff, pupils, you name it. So how do, how do we do that?
Thanks. Sorry, go ahead.
I was, I was just, I was just going to come in and say, actually, we didn't accept that that's where the school was at. We, we actually, it's on record that we made a formal complaint. To the head of scrutiny at Education Scotland, because of the process and that we didn't agree with the outcome. However, the outcome is the outcome and we will deal with that and we will work with it. But I think it's worth noting that it's on record that we did complain formally about the process. So I'll let Paul come in and talk more about the, how we deal with all of our schools.
So, so we disagreed with the process and, and the rating?
Yes, we did, yes.
Like Paul, if it was the same happening, how do we resolve it and stop it getting to this stage?
Thanks, Convenor. So Audrey's obviously talked about this specific example. What we would always do is we had a robust and challenging discussion with Education Scotland. It is not an exact science when you look at the How Good Is A School document in terms of which way a rating can go. It's about professional judgement. One of the other things about short model inspection is because it's a shorter period of time. It's also a smaller inspection team. And therefore, in terms of those, their opinions, I suppose, and their professional judgements, there's a smaller team to test it with. But we're always keen to learn, as you talked about, and to make sure that this doesn't happen again. So I'm working with the head of scrutiny, obviously. Mr McInge talked about the inspector, the head of scrutiny coming next week to visit, but I'm working separately with him. To come and visit, to do some work specifically with our secondary head teachers and around how they do come to their judgements. And to help inform our planning and our quality assurance processes. And again, hopefully that will help to alleviate any future situations arising as has happened here, Convenor.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Can we perhaps arrange at some time for the, the scrutiny committee to be invited around the scale of. Mr McInnes is happy enough to facilitate that. And that would give one understanding as well, the sort of changes that he's put in place. Hidden in the next inspection as well. That'd be possible to.
Absolutely, Convenor. I'll work with Mr McInge to do that.
Okay, is, is this report agreed? Okay, thanks very much for that.
Ollie.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Thanks, Convenor. Take you on to item four, fire and rescue quarterly performance report. The report is before you.
Okay, we've got someone for a firm service going to talk me through. Is it Mr Sharp, is it?
It certainly is. Good afternoon, everyone. For those of you who haven't met, my name is Jason Sharp. I'm the local scene officer for Perth, Engus and Dundee. On the call also have group commander Paul Robertson, who discharges the SFRS responsibilities within Dundee. I trust you've all had an opportunity to review the quarter one scrutiny report pulled together. Just for your information, you, you may already be aware that our local plan is due for a refresh. We have been carrying a full review of this over the last few weeks. And hopefully we're in a position to provide that information at the next scrutiny meeting. Prior to the creation of a draft local plan. What we'll do, Convenor, if it's acceptable, is I'll hand it over to Paul to present the report and then we can answer any questions that may arise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, boss. Convenor, if it's okay, what we'll do is I'll just give a light touch on the performance summary and highlights. And then the, the, the related performance management and, and then happy to take questions on the report, including the appendixes at the rear. So in quarter one, priority one, accidental dwelling fires were slightly above the target that was set for the quarter. But incidents on general were low impact with limited firefighting required. Most of these incidents were cooking related with occupants out of the building and very limited firefighting being done. And that gives a clear indication that the detection is working effectively and getting people out of property before our arrival. And there were no fatal casualties and, and non fatal casualties were reported at three. Which is down on the same quarter last year in the three year trend. In relation to performance management for this section. There were four hundred and seventy two home fire safety visits carried out in the Dundee area in the quarter. Two hundred and ten of those are high risk properties and target initiatives with partners and training for risk recognition. For partners to raise awareness and increase referrals, which Dundee has a, has a very high success rate. So that we are, we're getting early identification of high risk occupants. In relation to priority two and non domestic fires, again, we were slightly above the target on, on actual incidents. But again, very limited firefight action required on the arrival of crews. So same indicator of detection working effectively. No casualties reported at all within the non domestic arena. That also means that occupants are leaving the premises when alarms raised. Performance management for this section, sixty one enforcement audits were carried out and four post-fire audits. With no trends identified across those, those properties where educational support and advice was given. To improve the fire safety awareness in, in those workplaces. Regards priority three, over the quarter, there were seven RTCs in the city. That's road traffic collisions. And that's a decrease in last year and it's also below the target. However, there was one reported fatality following an incident on Riverside Drive. Firefighters were in attendance but did not need to extricate. The occupant in that vehicle was clear of the vehicle. And in the hands of Scottish ambulance service on arrival of our crews. The, the other six incidents. Indicate that there were low speed collisions, no trends identified with regards locations. There were two non fatal casualties in those other six. They were assisted by firefighters. Before being removed by the Scottish ambulance service to hospital. In regards to performance management and preventative measures, community action team. And operational crews are actively looking to support Police Scotland colleagues in the rollout of a new road safety educational initiative. Road safety featured in the Dundee Schools competition, which you'll all be aware of. And we're looking to expand that across all high schools in Dundee in the coming year. We're also keen to get a new version of the Safe Drive Stay Alive initiative up and running this year. And that also has quite a, quite a large section on road safety content. Priority four, unwanted fire alarm signals was slightly above the target for the quarter with three hundred and nineteen turnouts for our crews. We've got details of the top five property types within the performance management on page forty one of the meeting pack. SFRS UFA reduction strategy is now in place. And so we would expect to see a decrease in these numbers over the coming quarters for the rest of the year. Performance management on a day to day basis, operational crews will take every opportunity to educate and advise duty holders. At premises where UFA occurs. And indeed legislative fire safety officers will also raise awareness and provide technical advice on detection. And workplace fire safety matters. And priority five, so deliberate fires, both primary and secondary fires. Continue to be a challenge in Dundee. Both quarterly targets are exceeded. Despite ongoing work of the community action team and operational crews. Who are engaging both proactively and in an educational strategy. And also reactively to mitigate spikes on a day to day basis with antisocial fire reason activity. Further information is within the performance management on page forty three. Also, in conjunction with that, the, the additional highlight points in performance management is. Initiative by the CAT team for refuse management and common stairwells with partners in Dundee City Council. Derlik buildings partnership groups and correspondence with owners. Firefighter safety information and shared situational awareness for partner safety. Increase in operational crews for schools and educational talks on the potential impact, risk and consequences. That's definitely something that's been pushed at the, the stations in Dundee now. And we're starting to see an uptick in those, those visits taking place. Regards priority six, training exercise activity is fully detailed on page forty four of the report. Which covers prevention activity, risk information gathering and sharing, operational training and exercising activity. And also an enhancement in the capability at Balmasi Fire Station. Where there are personnel now trained to level two floodwater response. So that's an enhancement for the area. Happy to take questions, Convenor.
Yes, thanks very much for that, Paul. Well, pass you over to Bailey MacPherson.
Thanks very much, Convenor. And thanks, Paul, for that very useful overview. I, I would like to start by making a general comment about a, a concern my group has with regard to where. This Scottish Fire and Rescue's report and police reports now sit. Because, as you all know, Convenor, my group opposed the recent committee changes. And leaving aside what we feel are some overly lengthy and entirely forgettable committee names. Our substantive concern is the fact that whereas in the past, fire and police. Reports came to a committee of all elected members across the city. It now essentially cuts out all but eight of the twenty nine elected members, which I think we have a bit of a concern about. Particularly given over the years, elected members from all parts of the city have been very proactive in asking questions. And we've had really quality answers from both Scottish Fire and Rescue Service and, and, and Police Scotland over that time. And we really do have a concern that this level of debate and discussion is curtailed. And I'm sure people will have questions today. I certainly have a specific question for Jason and Paul in a moment. But we, we certainly, we, we, we take the view that unlike other aspects of the, the scrutiny committees. Work or indeed any committee of the council, the committees of the council are there to work on the work of Dundee City Council. Now, in the case of fire and rescue and Police Scotland, we are not the decision making body. We're not part of the chain of command. And therefore, we feel, and it's only our own thoughts, we feel that the best way forward would be to have a separate board publicly. Yeah, a public meeting, but a separate board at which all twenty nine councillors are invited to. And that way we get rid of this problem of the fact that twenty one of us now can no longer take part. Now, I can't do anything about that six month rule and all that in terms of standing orders. But we will certainly, I would hope that people in other groups will, will take this on board. But if not, after the six month rule is no longer applying, we will certainly want to bring back something to committee along these lines. So enough of the rant and on to the question. The, the question's really about the information on pages forty two and forty three. Around what Paul did indicate was a, a, a slight, a slightly concerning situation in. Relation to deliberate, deliberate fires. Because in particular, if we look at deliberate primary fires, this is just the first quarter. And we're up at forty five at this fairly early juncture within the, in, in, in the financial year. Now, I appreciate that. You know, the, the very good work that Dundee Cat and the operational crews are, are, are doing in this respect. And, and in particular in relation to the schools, which is very, very welcome. But I, I was just really wondering when it talks and, and what you also said, Paul, about, you know. Engagement, for example, common stairwells, that's a very good point. I have a lot of tenements in my ward. We get concerns from time to time, frankly, about, you know, old bits of furniture being stored on, on, on stairwells and so on. Which is, which is, which is obviously a worry in relation to fire risk. I was just really wondering, and it's in particular about the comment about where there are repeated issues. There is community engagement within these areas. I was just really wondering what other community engagement. Where there are repeated issues in a particular area, what, what other community engagement. As Scottish Fire and Rescue Service are able to undertake to, to hopefully put a cap on what is a little bit of a worrying trend.
Thank you for the question, Bailey MacPherson. So on a day to day basis, the community action team monitor our incident log. So they, they check that every morning, notwithstanding they do only work Monday to Friday, but it's checked again first thing on a Monday morning. To check incident activity over the weekend. The CAT team will then look to identify trends and patterns. So if there's been a spike in a particular area, they will reach out to community working groups. They will do leaflet drops, they'll do what we call environmental visual audits. I, I make a point of, of reaching out and connecting with the community action team on a regular basis. Because the, the work that they do is, is quite far reaching. They, they, they have links into Dundee City Council for things like the uplift of that refuse in common stairwells, et cetera. The identification of derelict buildings, which pose not only risk to the community, but obviously the risk to firefighters. Should we be turned out to these incidents? But yeah, I mean, I, I personally was, was very impressed when I came back into the area to, to see the work rate. That that small team carry out on a day to day basis. I've, I'd never heard of any one or a area within the Fire and Rescue Service mourning things on a daily activity. So it is, it is reactive in that respect. But as I said, since I've come back into the area. We, we, we obviously had a bit of a lag over COVID with, with engagement because we weren't allowed to engage. And we may be suffering from that at this moment in time and that may be the uptick that we're seeing is that behavioural issues of, that have. Came about because of the lack of engagement over that two or three years. But absolutely operational crews, all Dundee stations are now taking positive steps to, to get back in there. With regards what we are experiencing and what we are being turned out to. Information from the community action team identifies through colleagues in Police Scotland. That these are very small groups of specific individuals that are responsible for very high numbers of these turnouts for us. And Scottish Fire and Rescue Service is limited in, in, in what it can do. We will absolutely assist with the, the education and rehabilitation of these people. But, but it goes beyond that. I hope that answers your question.
It, it does indeed, Paul. I'm, I'm grateful for such a comprehensive response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Short.
Thank you very much, Convenor. Can I just put it on record that I've had a number of one to ones of late with Cammie Sands. Who I believe kind of leads up that whole CAT side of things, moving over into the sort of housing spectrum. We've been a little bit concerned with regards to e-scooters and charging and things and how that might have an impact on our communities. So, you know, we, we might be sitting in a smaller committee, but we always have access to yourselves. And I'd like to thank you for that. And also, when it comes to the CAT team, can I just bring in the fact that. Happens quite frequently in the Maryfield wards and the team that sits with Tony Boyle. And the rapid response are excellent coordinating with fire and rescue. So again, they won't be in the statistics because we never see the fires that don't happen because of the good work that your teams do. But it is recognised that it does happen. So thank you for that. My focus really probably with my question is kind of twofold. One of it is there's a real kind of agenda at the moment with regards to the short term holiday lets. And I think it's Friday that people have to be registered by. And, and I understand that fire and rescue will have the opportunity to come with, with the police to the licensing committee. However. However, will there be special messages when we know where the short-term holiday lets are with regards to fire? And I'm thinking back to when HMOs first came in, and that was because of fatalities. And then we got HMOs that are very firm in the way that we operate HMOs to save lives. And, you know, having been on short-term breaks and holiday lets myself, sometimes, you know, it could be parlor central. And so are we quite joined up in the thinking with regards to that? Because it's not just the antisocial side of it, it's also the kind of safety of life with regards to the hot short-term holiday lets. And the other thing was with regards to the road safety, safety side, or is the, when we used to go to the Caird Hall, I visited it once and even I was thinking, oh, this is a bit for old gins when they go out, the glow sticks and things as part of it. We're the city of GTA. Has there been any opportunity perhaps of getting out there into the gaming community and seeing if we can perhaps do some kind of virtual reality immersive type stuff with our young people and lead through that way? Innovation sometimes is just sitting there on our doorstep and we don't think about using the players that we have in the city. And if you want any kind of introductions or anything with regards to that, if you think it's something that's quite sensible, then more than happy to make those introductions. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Short. With regards to short-term holiday lets, it was actually mentioned, we had our local senior officers meeting just prior to this. And Mike, that heads up the Prevention and Protection Team, it's absolutely on the radar. And there are teams cited on that. I think it's the first of October is the deadline. That was what was mentioned in our meeting anyway. And so please take assurance that it doesn't, I don't have anything here on it specifically because it falls out with the scope of the report. But I'd be happy if you like, I'm assured that they are all over it and that they will be engaging with those premises. And the duty holders is key to provide advice and education where it's required. With regards the RTC educational part, we actually, SFRS supports Police Scotland by way of using VR goggles. That is what we use, it's virtual reality that we use as well as other tools. But certainly, if you want councillor Short, I could, it would actually be Cammie himself, who you've obviously made links with, I'm sure he'd be appreciative of it because, you know, innovation is one of our values. If there are other opportunities that we can link in with local businesses to expand that experience, then we would absolutely embrace that. Hopefully that answers your question.
Fantastic. Thanks very much. I do have a sneaky other one, Convenor, if that's okay. So we've, again, this goes back to the whole housing side of things. We've had a series of new doors have gone into the multi-stories across the city. And it was a huge massive investment. And I'd just like to put on record that I heard from colleagues in Fife where the doors came from, that fire and rescue were really good at going over and learning about the doors and approaching the doors in a way that you were very keen and interested in exploring how you could operate within that dimension. Maybe it's something that we can pick up with our colleagues from Police Scotland as well with regards to these new doors. Because obviously, it's a lot of households across the city and it's good to see. But it's also an investment that we don't have to want to repeatedly go back to. So thanks to Fire and Rescue for engaging in the way that you have.
Keep your axe in your pocket, is it? Save the door. Okay, councillor Roberts.
Thanks. Where do shelter housing come into the unwanted fire alarms? I saw the hospitals, primary schools, secondary schools, things like that. Residential shelter-type housing, and we're one up the road from me, the alarms go off regularly. And they tend to be burnt toast. And you're sending out quite a lot of machinery on the road. The appliances come up the King's Way into that, just to find that it's smoke or the alarm has set itself off is the other one. So where has this been in the report?
Thank you, Bailey Roberts. It's not highlighted within the report because it's not within the top five offenders. And it's a very specific, if we're talking about a specific premise. I'd be happy if you could contact me directly by email, give me the name of the premise. I can absolutely find out how many activations we've had and what we've done about that, what engagement we've taken part in with the duty holders, because I'm sure we will have, if that's all right. Thank you.
Can I maybe ask you a question myself? It's in relation to the sort of news today and the fire that was in air and how there was a high-reach vehicle called upon from Kilmarnock that broke down. And then a further one had to be called on from Glasgow. And given that obviously high-rise, high-reach vehicles are probably one of the cuts that's going on in this area, it leaves with a sort of potential near miss. How would these be reported to us so as that if we were to be lobbying Fire and Rescue Scotland for, you know, these things to be reinstated, how would we hear about them from yourselves?
Okay, Paul, coming on that one if you want.
Certainly.
Thanks. That's a good question and clearly ties in with the work I've done with you off-table, having private sessions on the Strategic Services Review Programme. Again, it's quite political and how that occurred down in the west of Scotland. And you will be aware that we did in the city in Dundee reduce our height coverage by one height up in the McAlpin Road earlier this year as part of a strategic review of our height resources. What I'd be happy to do is take it away from the scrutiny and have a separate session with you to talk that through, the rationales and how we are going to look at phase two of the Strategic Services Review Programme. Hopefully Greg did circulate that information earlier on in the month that we produced, which is also sitting on the Scottish Government website, how our budget is shaping up for next year and what that could potentially mean to us. So we have had a request and from other local authorities to come and talk about that some more. And happy to set up a session with yourselves and talk that through.
I mean, I think that'd be useful. I think that, you know, for our, and the safety of the people in this area, then, you know, I think it's the type of thing that we should know about if there was that level of near miss because sort of cutback in equipments being enforced for others. So happy to have a meeting with yourself and talk that through.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Doesn't appear to be any further questions on this. Can this be agreed? Okay, then Willie will move on. Okay, thanks very much. Take you on to item five, Dundee Policing Area Quarterly Police Report. It's a report by Chief Superintendent Phil Davison, who's present to introduce this item. Okay, Phil, you going for it?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you all again. Before introducing our report today, I'd like to first place on record my thanks to Chief Inspector Ross Fitzgerald, who I know is known to the majority of you. As you'll know, up until just a week or so ago, he was the local area commander for Dundee. And Ross really has served Dundee very well in recent years. And I wish him all the best as he moves into his new role within Tayside to further expand his own experience and development. So it was just that note of thanks for Ross. Whilst Ross has officially changed roles, he is with us today to present the quarter one report, given that he was in role in Dundee for that quarter's period. And I'm really grateful to him for that. And also, just ahead of the report introduction, also to introduce to you Chief Inspector Laura Wilson, who is also on your screen and is the new local area commander for Dundee. Laura comes with broad policing experience, having served in Tayside previously. And she returns to the divisional area, having held a number of national roles within our contact command and control division. I'm sure that Laura will be a real asset to Dundee and I've no doubt you all get to know her over the weeks and months ahead. In terms of the report today, so it covers quarter one of the current policing year and it represents the first report against our three-year Dundee local police plan that members previously endorsed. And aside, the summary performance information that is against our key priorities, members will note the spotlight focus on the theme of drug and substance harms that are detailed within this period's report. And the spotlight themes for awareness are areas that will change within each reporting period as indicated in our three-year plan. And that just allows a little bit more depth and focus on particular topics for scrutiny purposes. So for example, road safety may be a spotlight of focus at a future report. In relation to the spotlight focus this time round, I'm also joined today by Sergeant Elise Wilson, who's part of our Divisional Partnerships Interventions and Preventions Department. She's on the call and will support Ross and I around any particular questions that you might have on the more preventative and supportive work we do around about substance harms. But in terms of a quick summary, I'll pass you over to Ross, who'll look at those performance highlights and spotlight focus. And then we can clearly take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Ross? Good afternoon, Convenor and other members of the group. Just to take you through the kind of key summary points this afternoon, so we'll take you to page eight first. And looking at violence, in terms of quarter one, we see, in essence, a fairly level playing field in terms of crimes during quarter one in comparison to the previous year. What is noticeable is we've seen a steady reduction in serious assaults at the same time as we've seen a similar increase in robberies. Now, the crime profile around both those crime types remains very similar in terms of the presence of alcohol and drugs being prevalent with both perpetrators and victims when those crimes occur. And also, high numbers of victims and perpetrators who are known to each other prior to the crime occurring. So that trend and that picture around violent crime in Dundee has not changed. What was not reflected in the violent statistics is attempted murder, just to touch on that briefly. I think the Q1 of last year, we saw a spate of around nine attempted murders, which was particularly high for the city. So probably just to provide a reassurance that the number for Q1 this year is three with all of those crimes detected. So an improvement in terms of that position. And positively, our common assaults have seen a fairly significant reduction in numbers of around 10%, which is that kind of bulk crime where no serious injury occurs. So those statistics are welcome in terms of that trending in a downward direction. I would draw your attention to the detection rates. At the end of Q1, detection rates lower than where I would have liked them. However, fair to say that in terms of those more complex investigations around serious assaults and robberies, the completion of those investigations does take that a little bit longer than some of our most straightforward offences. And therefore, a number of those crimes have now been detected. And we have seen increases in around about 20 percentage points in terms of detection rates across robberies and serious assaults as we sit in terms of the performance here now. So that probably covers violence for you. Moving into antisocial behaviour and disorder. I suppose the general statistics are there in terms of numbers of offences and numbers of incidents. We have seen an increase of around 13 to 14%, sorry, in Q1 of this year in terms of crimes of vandalism and also an increase of around 15% in terms of the overall group four incidents now. But without wishing to reiterate a lot of the information that Fire and Rescue have just provided you earlier on, some of those increases around overall group four are quite certainly linked to willful fire-raising offences, which are also reflected in the increases in the Fire and Rescue Service reports. And we have seen them in terms of derelict buildings and largely that picture is around youth antisocial behaviour and also crimes in open spaces and then kind of abandoned areas of ground. So I suppose my colleagues in Fire and Rescue have touched on some of the proactive work that happens in the education space, which I'll not repeat here. But I probably would build on the response they gave to councillor McPherson's answer around kind of fire raising in common closes particularly. So what I would reflect on is that we often see that kind of behaviour in terms of the dumping of rubbish and property in common closes aligned to other aspects of antisocial behaviour. So it wouldn't surprise you to hear that those who are prepared to dump rubbish in closes are often the same individuals who have poor relationships with neighbours, for example. So just to highlight our own response to that. Now, in respect of those repeat callers where we have ingrained neighbourhood issues, we've got really significant and well-versed processes in place for that in terms of ensuring each officer who goes to that location is fully aware of the full history of the set of circumstances. We discuss those incidents and those particularly problematic neighbours disputes with colleagues in the antisocial behaviour team on a daily basis and make sure that the appropriate resources are targeted towards finding a safe and quick resolution for individuals who are affected by that. And that could be through intervention and education, it could be right through to the issuing of antisocial behaviour orders or making arrests if there is criminality involved in that. And similarly, we clearly feed into Fire and Rescue and colleagues in the local authority around highlighting premises and closes that require kind of cleaning and collection of material to reduce that fire risk. So hopefully that demonstrates the kind of level of coordination across the services that is key to tackling that kind of approach. We have spoken about education. I suppose for me, it's worth kind of also highlighting some of the challenges we face. So I think anecdotally, it's probably a reasonable thing to say that those who are not engaged particularly well in education, who are not benefiting from the structure and the high-quality level of education delivered across the city, are also those who are engaged in some of the antisocial behaviours we are seeing. So that there are limitations to what our educational programmes can deliver. And a real onus on us as kind of professional agencies in the city to try and really reach into that space and target the right people with the right message, which undoubtedly is a work in progress and requires a continued focus through the rest of the year, which we'll absolutely do in conjunction with colleagues in Fire and Rescue Service and others. So moving on from antisocial behaviour, moving into, sorry, the road safety space. Again, Fire and Rescue have provided some statistics on road safety for you already. We'll probably reiterate the fact that there was one fatality within the first quarter of the year. But thankfully, a reduction in those RTCs, which resulted in serious injury, a fairly significant decrease of around 58%. The report itself demonstrates how roads policing unit colleagues have supported the division in terms of targeted interventions on key routes and also some of the educational work which has been done across the city during the quarter. And clearly, again, Fire and Rescue colleagues have touched on some of the plans for the forthcoming years. So I won't reiterate them here, given you have had that information already. Touching on our group two, kind of sexual offences, again, Q1 saw some increases in respect of that space. What I would say is that's probably reflected against a very kind of low occurrence rates in Q1 of last year. And as Q1 is the first quarter, some big percentages in terms of increases which are borne from relatively small numbers of additional crimes. As I said, a focus for us remains in that preventative space. You'll see a real targeting of offenders to try and reduce the impact of multiple offences, which is reflected across the kind of positive set of detection rates in comparison to last year figures and also in comparison to the five-year average. Speaking about acquisitive crime, you'll see the first quarter of the year, seen some marked reductions in acquisitive crime in comparison to the year before. To be entirely transparent, I would caveat that against the fact that they remain very much higher than the five-year average. And of course, last year was right at the height, the start of the cost of living crisis. So figures last year are very high and we're comparing against those in this case. So still significant concerns around levels of acquisitive crime within the city. We continue to see relatively small numbers of people committing multiple offences. And you'll see some of the success stories in terms of detections reflected in the report highlight the number of crimes which individuals are being charged with a time of arrest. Just highlighting that point in terms of repeat offenders having a marked impact on our performance figures. I'll move across to a kind of focused area for the rest of the report in terms of drug harms and drug enforcement activity. Um, as I move to the bottom of the report, I'd like to, to speak about our, our kind of interventions, um, first. I think it's clearly, uh, clearly the term of Police Scotland, that kind of prevention in that space in terms of reducing the, the harm of drugs is, is absolutely the key. Um, we are working very closely in terms of that whole agency and multi-agency approach to try and make as big an impact on the harms that drugs causes as we possibly can. I suppose locally and nationally, and we are clearly, from Police Scotland's perspective, um, supporting that kind of public health-based approach to, to the harm of, of substance abuse. We'd highlight the substance education package, which has now been rolled out nationally, which has involved the training of 350 officers across the country to deliver those kind of edu- education packages into our education establishments to try and influence behaviours and culture as young in age as possible. And that has been rolled out in T-Side, um, as well. Uh, moving on to the successes of our kind of non-fatal overdose group, I think probably Dundee being a real forerunner in terms of the creation of that group, a multi-agency group that, that meets daily uh, to look at any incidents across the city where individuals have suffered a non-fatal overdose. Within the context of Q1, thus resulting in, in some really practical outputs for local people in terms of 85 support visits to those who have suffered um, as a result of addiction issues and, and coming into crisis. And also, you know, a, a number of inputs there in terms of, and to kind of foster care and kinship carers to try and spread messages around prevention, educate people in terms of what to look for and also some signposting in terms of what to do should they encounter someone who is in kind of crisis as a result of drug harm or drug addiction. Similarly, some really positive work in terms of the third sector, um, kind of thinking specifically around our kind of work with positive steps in terms of cuckooing initiatives. Understanding that, um, those who are cuckoed are significantly vulnerable, not only at the hands of the, the kind of offenders who may take over their properties, but also in terms of, of the, the harm that their own drug addictions may kind of surface. So a real quality set of interventions led by third sector, Police Scotland and others to try and break that cycle, safeguard individuals within their own homes and thereafter put in appropriate supports to try and minimise the, the harm that's been caused to them. With some real successes across the city, not only in Q1, but, uh, right throughout the performance year. Moving on to, to naloxone, again, it's laid out in the, in, in the report for you, but ultimately naloxone being a first aid intervention that has demonstrated itself to be invaluable in terms of the saving of lives now. That no one's suggesting for one second that naloxone is the answer to, um, drug harm in Scotland. However, in terms of simply saving lives, it's proven itself over and over again to be an extremely effective tool for officers to carry. Probably again, a wee bit of pride in terms of Dundee being right at the start of the rollout of, of naloxone for Scotland nationally, in terms of Dundee being the pilot, um, for that initiative. With a real positive, um, uptake by local officers in terms of wanting to carry naloxone and having the confidence to use it in the right set of circumstances. So to tie into Q1, across T-Side, 17 incidents across T-Side, nine of which related to, to individuals in Dundee. So again, nine life-saving interventions delivered by officers in support of, of local people. But a huge part of the carriage and naloxone also being around that kind of breaking of stigmas, um, around those who are suffering from drug harm. Um, with that kind of view of, of, you know, helping others to realise that, that there are things that they can do in terms of support and provision of support for, for, um, local individuals using drugs that, that our communities at large can kind of put in place in terms of carriage of naloxone. Here and in other places in Scotland, now rolled out nationally with officers right across the country and carrying naloxone in order to try and do their bit in terms of the, the saving of lives. Just to move on in terms of targeting those who are seeking to cause harm through being involved in the supply of drugs. But probably just to touch on, uh, our approach to enforcement and the tiered and graduated way that happens. So nationally, all of the information and intelligence, um, around those who are at most risk of committing, of causing serious harm to our communities is assessed and mapped, uh, ensuring that those who are going to commit or are intent on committing the most significant harm are tackled head-on by our organised crime and town counter-terrorism units. So although a nationally-based resource, they are geographically located right across the country, including in T-Side, um, area. In order to tackle head-on those who are organised and intent on doing harm. But beneath that tier, um, we have our own divisional serious and organised crime group based out of Dundee. Um, and again, the assessment and management of intelligence is really key to their work. With that intelligence being largely gathered by local uniform officers, community officers in the context of the thousands and thousands of contacts they have with members of the local communities, um, every week and, and every month. So from there, the, the report lays out a number of success stories in terms of enforcement action delivered in terms of multiple arrests, um, the enforcement of, I think, 10 search warrants during the course of Q1. And the seizure of around about three thousand pounds worth of controlled, again, with, with a view to disrupting activity, arresting criminals and supporting those who suffer from drug harm to, to make a recovery within the city. There are various prevention orders, for example, so orders which again tackle those who would do the most harm by placing legal prohibitions in terms of what they can and cannot do. So for example, an individual with the conviction for being supplied in, in, in the supply of drugs can be granted a serious crime prevention order with prohibitions attached to it, such as they can only operate one bank account, they can't register businesses. They are not allowed to continue to associate with other known criminals. And, and again, prohibitions around kind of curfew bales and where they can and cannot, cannot stay. So some really far-reaching, um, prohibitions which are, are vital for us to use in terms of our kind of fight against kind of criminality and hampering and disrupting the activity of those individuals. So I've probably spoken for long enough in terms of, of the report. So hopefully that summarises some of the, the, um, the kind of performance indicators and gives a broader sense of what we're doing particularly in that kind of drug, drug harm and prevention space. So I'd stop there and just welcome any questions, convener.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much for that. Okay, councillor Short, I think you're in first this time. You're on mute.
Yes, thank you very much, convener. Um, so I've got the really daft glossy at the very beginning. Ross, you've obviously done a brilliant job with these new tables. But, uh, at table 58, uh, it's got C Y T D and L Y T D. What the heck is the C and the L? That's just my first question, please.
Burnt, burnt.
Uh huh.
And, uh, last.
Last.
Is it, is it current and last?
Yeah.
Councillor, it's come, come year to date and last year to date, but if, if it gives you any reassurance, and I'm not going to name names, you're not the first person that's asked me that question since the publication of the report. So not, not a daft question.
Okay, brilliant. Um, so, uh, first of all, obviously, Ross, you're here with us this afternoon and I can't go without saying thank you very much. I think, um, well, it must be about two and a half years you've been at the coalface of Dundee. Um, there's actually a picture of your grandfather in the telly today. And I think you've probably, uh, look more like him now than you did when you came in two years ago. We've, we've had that implant on you. Uh, but I just can't say enough how, uh, genuinely you've been really supportive of the city and everything that we do. And as a city centre councillor, uh, what you've done with the whole city centre and night time economy and how we support the city has been really, really fabulous. So please, uh, take my thanks for that. Um, likewise, um, allowing some of the, the people to kind of go with their imagination. Um, it's on Twitter yesterday, today about the police station at Maryfield, uh, and the wildflower meadow. Um, it just looks absolutely fantastic and the opportunity for the young people in the primary school to work, uh, with the officers at the police station is just incredible. And I'm sure Dave Rice will be right in there. Um, helping them do it on a day-to-day basis in his role as inspector. So, you know, these things don't happen uh, by accident. They happen because of a culture and the culture that you've brought about when you've been here in Dundee has been incredibly, uh, positive. So thank you for that. Uh, having said that, obviously Laura's come in and she just needs to have everybody have the same surname as her. So so Phil, I don't know when you're going to be coming, Phil Wilson. It's like all the ladies are Wilson this afternoon. Um, my, uh, again, uh, the work that Elise does, uh, can't go, uh, without being, uh, recorded this afternoon. Um, the, the non-fatales, but also the other stuff. I, I recently visited the SARC and this boy said, oh, what are you doing in here, shorty? And, and it was, uh, one of Elise's officers I'd never met, but we'd always conversed on Twitter. Again, proof that we have these connections. It doesn't have to be a committee. We can do it every single, uh, day of our lives. And the work that you're doing, uh, with things like Imagine A Man, um, that's now going to be reflected in the work that they're doing in 16 days about Imagine That World, where we don't have to think about things like violence against women. These are hugely important and, uh, as a city, it's very much high up on the agenda and as city partners, we certainly can't do it as a council. Uh, and it's so important that we have a, a, a police service that recognise some of the, the limitations and some of the problems that we have that are societal. But actually, you're there being the partners that will provide the solution. Um, and so thank you so much for, for all that you do. And yeah, keep up the good work. It's, it's, it's tough out there. Um, but the imagination and the support that you're showing our communities is really, really important. And I'm sure the whole committee would thank you for the work that you do. And Ross, all the best. I hope you've got an easier time when you, when you go off to Angus.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Billy McPherson.
Uh, thanks, convener. And, uh, I would also like to thank, uh, Ross for all he's done, uh, during his time um, as area commander in Dundee and, uh, wish Laura every success in her new role. Uh, I've got very specific questions about information on page 61, um, of the substantive page numbering about the derelict buildings group. And I'm just really wondering, uh, if the council, uh, it talks about it being a multi-agency group chaired by Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. And I'm particularly interested to know what the council's input is into that in particular. Obviously, uh, having a derelict buildings group is particularly important, given the, as we've already alluded to today, the, um, the concern about deliberate fires that have taken place, uh, of late in, in, in the city. If I go back a few years, within the city council, there was a, a cross-departmental group, uh, looking at derelict buildings. But that was mainly in relation to trying to get buildings back into use. For example, it resulted in, if I recall correctly, at least one compulsory purchase, um, of a property to give that property a better chance of a more positive use in the future. So I was just really wondering, um, it, it does, for example, our own building standards team have an input into the derelict buildings group chaired by the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service, and which obviously Police, Police Scotland has input.
Yeah, councillor, I can maybe provide the Friday, an initial update. As he, um, Mr Sharp, Scottish Fire and Rescue, has come off mute there as well. So maybe just a, a little bit of an input from, from them as the chair would be, be good as well. But the, the local authority, you know, I suppose at a, a basic level, are, are, are committed to the group. It's in terms of looking at, you know, building security particularly. There's also a huge amount of liaison goes on with kind of building owners in terms of, of bringing buildings up to standard, securing them appropriately. Making sure that their own security arrangements are in place, for example. And so all of that work goes on to try and effectively hold property owners to account in terms of making making sure they are safe and, and not able to be accessed by others to try and prevent that kind of fire raising activity that, that we do see. So fundamentally, that's where it's at. But maybe defer to colleagues in, in fire and rescue chaired the committee just to give a, a broader view of that, if that is okay.
That's fine. Just you looking to top the knowledge up for us.
I, I think Ross has, um, absolutely covered it, um, spot on there. For me, I think no one derelicts, uh, no, they're not two the same really. So it's, it's generally a range of solutions you need to deploy in there and it's very much a feast. So the only other thing I was going to add to that, Ross, was the fact that we have our operational risk information database that we keep a really accurate record of the, the risks within the premises. So when we do have to make an operational response, we can ensure partner and public safety when we're responding to that. So hopefully that's covered, uh, good enough for you.
Okay, thanks for that. Billy McPherson, any further questions?
Yeah, I missed, I missed most of that because my internet failed. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just back on. But, um, I, I don't really want Ross to, I, I, um, or whoever else reply to have to repeat that. But I, I maybe, uh, if we could follow this up with a little bit of email. I'm, I'm particularly interested to know frankly, building standards, for example, of a day-to-day input. But I don't want to prolong this just now. Uh, but if, if perhaps, and I'm conscious that Ross is moving on, but perhaps if between uh, Scottish Fire and Rescue Service and Police Scotland, you're going to greet him, maybe just follow this up by email. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Good. Ross is getting some of his derelict, derelict buildings at Strathmartin Hospital built on at the moment. That'll save him a bit of grief. Okay. Sorry, Ross.
No, I was just taking form for councillor MacPherson. Well, I'm happy to pick that up by, by email and I'll, I'll see that happens as soon as possible.
Billy Roberts.
You're an officer now, gentlemen. Uh, I was the idiot that did phone up, well, sent in a message asking what the C and what the L were. And I've been on police and fire for, whoa, about 20 years now. So, uh, thank you. I, I did appreciate it. Um, the question I've got is, um, the 117 ASBOs and you've had 14 breaches. What happens next? Does it go back to court? And what's the probability of something actually happening rather than just slapping on the back of the wrists?
To comment on that, it's, it's very each instances and each breach is, is very different in, in nature and substance. So, you know, depending on severity, absolutely back to court and some kind of punitive measures can be taken if necessary to, to ensure that there is a real deterrent at the end of that. But clearly those decisions are for the court and are proportionate to the set of circumstances that are, are being reported. So there, there are, are a range of options available to the court in terms of community-based disposals, monetary fines, um, in severe circumstances, imprisonment if necessary, albeit to generally be avoided for those kind of neighbourhood disputes. So a, a range of options available to the court based on the severity of the offending. And but what I would say is that on, on the back of any breach of, um, an antisocial behaviour order, uh, clearly that's not the end of the story for our community teams or the antisocial behaviour and the local authority. It remains a work in progress in terms of supporting victims and also trying to influence better outcomes. So it, it's one tool in amongst many, many tools that we deploy to try and bring about safe and sensible resolutions as quickly as possible. But that difficult to give you a, 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 a one, one response in terms of what happens when an ASBO is breached, because it does, does depend on the specific circumstances.
Well, uh, you're looking to, sorry, Phil, you're looking to add to that, are you?
No, it, it was just with the, the benefit of having Sergeant Elise Wilson on the, the call that she, she may be able to give just a brief illustration to, to help out, Elise.
Yeah, absolutely, sir. Convener, councillor. Um, I could just probably share a couple of examples with you, just to give you an understanding of how unique they can be. Um, we had, uh, multiple complaints relating to a 43-year-old female in the Dundee area. Um, who was repeatedly shouting, swearing, causing a, a high degree of annoyance and nuisance to the neighbours. Obviously, it resulted in calls to Police Scotland, who linking in with the antisocial behaviour team. Um, were able to actually take interventions, get an ASBO. And then once the ASBO was granted, any breach of that then was subsequently dealt with as criminality. That then, when the breach of ASBO happened, the police would subsequently arrest the individual. There was a level of evidence that supported that. And thereafter, it resulted in, um, the crime subsequently issuing bail conditions. But what also allows us to do is allows us to continue that multi-agency approach to it, working with the partners. And we were actually able to then, with the support of Dundee City Council, with the housing team pursuing eviction against the individual involved. And that subsequently then gave a level of comfort to the other neighbours because the eviction proceedings, once they had actually taken place, it removed the problem that was initially there and causing that high degree of, of likes of upset for, for the neighbours. But we also have other situations where, um, you know, we, we had an individual, it was a male, who there was, uh, concerns around mental health involvement. And whilst obviously the, the, the high degree of antisocial behaviour and nuisance to the neighbour still was pursued through the means of an ASBO, we also through a multi-agency forum looked at the care and wellbeing of, of all the people who'd been involved in it, including, including the person who was subject to the ASBO with provisions put in place to make sure person who was subject to the ASBO, with provisions put in place to make sure that any matters relating to that person was addressed, but also subsequently to any victims. In that situation, it also resulted in the person who was subject to the ASBO being moved to a new property. And again, that then provided a level of comfort to the people who'd been in that situation enduring, you know, the antisocial behaviour for a period of time. So, you know, as Chief Inspector Fitzgerald said, every ASBO has to be dealt with uniquely and we need to just take the circumstances surrounding it into consideration to make sure all the actions we're taking are appropriate and justified. Hopefully that'll explain a little bit more around the work that we do with the multi-agency forum.
Elaine, you look to make a comment as well.
Thanks very much, convener. Just to echo Elise's comments in terms of that partnership working and how it benefits from the co-location at the West District office as well, so that we get a sharing of intelligence and information to make the right decisions should there be a breach of ASBO. So it is very much a partnership approach, looking at whatever disposals might be available to us as a partnership. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Billy Roberts, you have any further questions? Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Chair. It was just regarding the two pieces on the cycle to work scheme and the wellbeing group. I just wondered if there was any information on what kind of uptake you'd had on your cycle to work scheme? And in lieu of the wellbeing group survey from 2022, what facilities had maybe been introduced to assist officers in cycling to work?
Thanks, councillor. I don't have the sort of the direct figures to be able to give you just now, but I can certainly take away that bit of a commitment off table to get that provided to you in terms of the sort of the local uptake. But certainly nationally, it's a benefit to staff that is very much appreciated and is taken up in number. I just don't have the specifics to be able to respond to you on that. In terms of local provisions, then clearly dependent on the operating base from which our staff work from and the commuting distance from which they make their way in, then we have provisions clearly for storage, for showering, for otherwise welfare at the variety of our offices to clearly support those provisions. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. It was a pretty specific question. I maybe could have asked it before committee, so I'll just get an email subsequently. Thank you.
Okay, there doesn't appear to be any further questions. Ross, I wish you well. And Angus, you're only 150 yards away from where I'm sitting at the moment, so no doubt I'll be in touch. And Laura, I hope you enjoy your time looking after us and the people of Dundee. Thank you. Okay, Willie, sorry, is this report agreed? Okay, that looks agreed, so we'll move on. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. I take you onto item six, internal audit reports. And I believe that the executive director of corporate services is willing to use this item.
Okay, you're going for it, Robert, or is Paul?
Thank you, convener. Paul's going to introduce these apologies.
Okay. Want to say a few words on Paul?
Thank you, convener. So yes, on behalf of Cathy, who can join the meeting today, there are three separate reviews in terms of internal audit reports. There's a slightly new format to the internal audit reports that members will notice, some changes to the format and to the terminology within them. So within the appendix to the report, you should see the revised definitions, both in terms of the level of assurance that these reports or audits conclude and also in terms of how the actions identified within them are defined. There's three separate reviews, they're all included at appendix A. In terms of the changes as well, worth noting that one of the changes is that each review looks to pick up the key items from the corporate risk register and assess those specific controls and assess whether or not these may be controlled in relation to the findings of the audits. So the first review was in relation to general ledger. The scope of the review was to use, to review the use of the general ledger for the compilation of any budget and monitoring information and recommend any improvements. The conclusion of the audit was a limited assurance, which identifies that there are significant controls in place, albeit some weaknesses exist. Those weaknesses were in relation to the provision of documentation of key controls and processes and also completion of previous audit actions. Happy to take any questions in relation to the first report.
It looks like Billy McPherson's looking for a question on that report then. Billy McPherson.
Thanks indeed. My apologies, there's a phone going in the background, can't do anything about that. The, my question's really around the lack of formal documentation, as the report alludes to. And I was just really wondering if Mr Thompson could give us some assurances about how quickly and how comprehensively that's being addressed. And as a second aspect to that, on page 79, it indicates that the design of ledger management processes means that there's a significant degree of manual work required and validation of ledger information in the preparation of committee reports, which is obviously time-consuming for staff. And I was just really wondering, how much is that a systems problem rather than a processes problem? And again, I assume steps are being made to make that maybe, shall we say, a little bit more automated?
Yeah, thank you, Billy McPherson, for the question. So in relation to your second point, my view is that the majority of the issues are systems-based, over-processed. The current format of the system is very complicated in terms of the way it's been designed. And, you know, we're working through a process to try and simplify that to ensure more timious reporting. Some of the issues in particular that lead to the complicated issues are how the financial system interfaces with other feeder systems. And some of the feeder systems don't necessarily replicate the existing council structure, which does create issues and can make the process slightly more onerous than it should be. But we are working to a plan to rectify that and to align these systems and try and, you know, maintain the effective controls, both in terms of reporting. But that is a longer-term fix. In terms of systems documentation, there was a specific action point within the report to do so. And the timescale to have that in place is by the end of December.
Okay, I'm grateful for that reply, Paul, thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Short?
Thank you kindly. Is it all right, convener, if I come in on page 80? Okay to go into the next item on the, like the next?
Well, let's Paul want to comment beforehand. You want to say anything on the next report, Paul, or you?
Thank you, convener. Just a brief, so that the second internal report was in relation to review the council's vehicle tracking system, which monitors all council vehicles. The scope of that report, I might say that the report was requested by Construction Services Management and the scope was to assess whether management are using the tracking system in line with the approved policy. I'm pleased to say that the report had a substantial assurance that means that the system is generally sound. The review included that management are using the system in line with the policy and consistently with other services. However, it did identify that the policy itself for telematics requires review and that's included in the action plan.
Okay, then councillor Short.
Thank you. I suppose the question's a little bit twofold with regards to the fact that, good to see it coming here at the request of Construction Services Department. I'm sure that at the end of the day, the health and safety of our employees are piled around. And there is talk within it of a policy review. Now presumably, and this is where the question arises, if it's a policy review, it will come to a standard committee as opposed to scrutiny committee. Therefore, my question is, will it come to, what is the new city development? Or to where housing sits within that new committee as well? That's where I'm sort of looking for an answer on that one. Or is it city governance?
Greg, are you going to answer that one?
Yeah, thanks, convener.
Whatever Greg puts it.
So obviously, key policy documents would come to the relevant service committee for approval, but in some cases, operational policies would be dealt with by officers. So what I'll do is I'll take that question and discuss it with Elaine and Robin and Roger, and I'll come back to scrutiny and committee with an update as to where we think it appropriate for that policy once reviewed to go.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, Elaine, on that one? Billy McPherson.
Thanks, convener. I have a very specific question regarding trackers. It indicates that they are currently installed on 166 vehicles used by Construction Services, and that's approximately half of the 377 active vehicles fitted with trackers. How many vehicles do we actually have? And why, I would have thought it would just be good practice to ensure there's trackers on all vehicles that belong to the council to ensure that they're obviously being used appropriately. And I was just really wondering if we could have the total number? And is there an intention to ensure that those that don't have trackers will in the future?
Is anyone got an answer for that?
I'd be happy to answer that. Convener, so we've got 817 vehicles in the fleet and we've got tracker systems fit to 451 of those. So just over half of the fleet's got tracker systems in it. It does come at a cost, so the operation maintenance of the telematic system costs £45,000 per annum. And again, it's the balance of about half the fleet's deemed suitable. We fit them to high-value vehicles from the theft risk perspective. We also fit the non-operational vehicles to aid us in resource deployment reviews and also just a selection, so we can get a sample of utilisation and optimisation of general groups of vehicles as well. But we do find that the balance that we've got of around about half of the fleet is optimal, given some of the costs which would be incurred if we expanded it to all vehicles.
Okay. Thanks for that. I'm not sure I particularly agree with the view that we should have a whole load of vehicles going about without any trackers on. But the other thing is, did I hear Mr McNauton correctly? He said 451 vehicles, but this report says 377.
Yeah, that's correct. Apologies. Yeah, it's, so we've got 817 vehicles in total for the council. The ones that are referenced in the report are in relation to the Construction Services fleet rather than the entire fleet.
No, the report says 166 are used by Construction Services, representing approximately half of 377 active vehicles fitted with trackers, which to me says the total number of vehicles we have fitted with trackers is 377. Do I take it, Mr McNauton, that 451 is actually the correct figure?
Yes, again, 451 is the number of council vehicles, which includes all of the council's fleet of vehicles. And again, and that's out of a total of 817 vehicles. So the lower numbers in relation to the ones for Construction Services as a department of that overall fleet.
Sorry, Fraser, you're on mute.
Yeah, I've gone and muted myself. Yeah, I won't, you know, I'll leave it at that today, but I think I may want to follow up on this because I do wonder about having half your fleet with absolutely no tracking on it at all. I question the appropriateness of that, but I'll leave that for some follow-up.
No problem. Okay, want to move on then, Paul, to the next.
Thank you, convener. Happy to do so. So the final internal audit report was in relation to the T-Cities region deal, of which the council, of course, is the accountable body for. And the scope of the review was to ensure controls were in place for projects, to ensure they were approved in a timely manner and that grant awards were made in condition with the appropriate guidelines and also that projects were progressed and monitored and reported accordingly. So pleased to say again, the conclusion of the report is that substantial assurance is in place. However, the key risk was in relation to timely submission of business cases for projects in later years. And obviously, that can have an impact in terms of project deliverability.
Okay. Billy McPherson.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Paul, for the introduction. My question's really about the presentation of business cases on time. And I was just really wondering if we would get an indication of how many out of what, if you know what I mean? And rather than putting officers on the spot today, would there be some merit in something coming to committee in the not-too-distant future, just really updating us as to where we are with the T-Cities region deal?
Elaine, Officer, got a response for Billy McPherson? Robert?
Convener, that the information on progress with business cases is reported through the joint committee. I'm happy to share with members of the committee the information that goes to them in terms of the timing of business cases, if that will be helpful for members and we can arrange for that to be circulated.
I think that's, I think that's helpful. I was just saying, on an ongoing basis, there are times, to be frank, as an elected member of the council, I feel quite detached from what's going on with the T-Cities region deal. I'm sure I'm not the only one. So I would certainly welcome that, but I think we'll have to think about this in terms of the ongoing basis, because this is obviously, obviously for the long term.
Yeah. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Can I maybe ask Mr Pressman to come in on the second question that Billy McPherson had about the update to committee on the T-Cities deal?
Yeah, Robin?
Chair, very happy. I know that Mr Emmett has given an indication that we can happily circulate the papers to give an overview. In terms of the specific business cases, the most fundamental change has been the impact of COVID and then the cost of living crisis, the increase in mortgage rates and the significant surge in capital expenditure. The combination of those four things has meant that the completion of business cases becomes very significantly out of control of the applicant. And we've therefore seen a lot of disruption to the original plan. So I think all officers and all the projects necessarily want to get the business cases concluded, approved by the joint committee and the two governments and get the projects on site. But really, that has not been possible over the past two years. I think some confidence is rebuilding, but funding gaps now exist for many of these projects because of the difficulty securing match funding and the significant increases in capital costs. So a challenging environment, but I think as the audit report says, very, very positive in terms of the council's leadership on the deal, and crucially, the role that the other partners have played and that the core PMO team in conjunction with colleagues in finance have played. Hope that's helpful.
See, can I maybe ask, just before we bring councillor Short in for her question, because, you know, it might be relevant to a report that you bring back forward. Would there be, or could there be within that report, a breakdown of any money that's been drawn down at the moment? How it relates to the sort of investment amount of 150 million? How that equates to the 6,000 jobs? And how it has, it's degenerate of the £400 million worth of investment? So there must be some correlation between the figures. And I wonder if that report would reflect that we're on target for meeting the figures?
Chair, I would confirm that that information is presented on a regular basis to the joint committee. That highlights particularly the benefits realisation, which ensures that we're still on track to reach the jobs total, which was agreed at the start of the deal, and also to secure the match funding that was highlighted. So I think in the first instance, it would be sensible, as Mr Emmett suggests, that we circulate the relevant papers to members and then consider whether there's any further information gap, or indeed whether a trip back to scrutiny would be sensible.
That's fine. Okay, councillor Short?
Thank you, convener. I think it was 2019 since I was last part of the T-Cities deal joint board. And during my time, I just get an opportunity to visit Perth and the city hall up in Perth. And I just see recently that they're almost ready to open their doors. And so from the point of view of the T-Cities deal, we've got places like the tech pole now, where they've got spades in the ground and things. So there is stuff happening, but it's maybe just like a little bit of a step away from the narrative of the city and the region. And I noticed with interest, and this is where the question comes to, there's a risk register and very much of what we were doing with the T-Cities deal was around attracting and very much of what we were doing with the T-Cities deal was around attracting more people to the area. And I did mention it on Monday night, Robin, if you remember, with regards to Visit Scotland and the loss of a tourist information board in Dundee, which was and could be a regional thing. So hopefully you can take back to the T-Cities deal joint board that we feel that should be part of their risk and they should hopefully be a voice for that as well, that we're concerned with the lack of information with regards to Visit Scotland being in the city. And if you look at the partners who are there as part of the joint board, Visit Scotland are actually one of the partners.
Chair, confirm, I'm happy to highlight that to other parties. But I think what is essentially an operational decision for Visit Scotland, notwithstanding that our elected members may feel aggrieved by that decision, I cannot immediately see that it's a matter for the joint committee of the T-Cities region deal. I think if there is a belief that it should be discussed at the joint committee, I would recommend that individual members table a motion or an amendment to enable a discussion. But I think from an officer perspective, I wouldn't immediately see that it's something that we would wish to table.
Yeah. Any further questions, councillor Short? Okay. Can these three reports be agreed? Okay, that's them agreed. So we'll move on then, Willie?
Yeah, thank you very much. Take you on to item seven, internal audit plan, updating progress report. Again, Paul Thompson was speaking to this item.
You again, Paul?
Thank you, convener. So this item is a standard progress report in terms of delivery of the approved annual audit plan. It identifies an update on appendix one of where the various projects are. Also in the report, it notes that we are currently looking to appoint an audit support contractor to support, deliver some of these particular projects. There is a vacancy within the audit team just now that we're also going through an ongoing recruitment basis to recruit to and trying to identify additional support through agency to support the team, which hasn't been successful. Separate to the report in appendix two, it also includes an update in terms of where services are implementing previously agreed audit actions. And we will bring an update on that report, this report back to December at quarter three in terms of where we are in delivery of the plan.
Okay, thanks very much for that. So any questions on that report? Paul, regreed? Okay, Willie, we'll move on again.
Thanks, take you on to item eight, corporate fraud team activity and performance, including whistleblowing. It's reported by the Executive Director of Corporate Services, which is for noting.
Convene, this just provides an update on the performance of the corporate fraud team over the past year. Appendices provide the number of details of the number of cases investigated and the fraud and savings identified. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Doesn't look to be. So is that agreed? Then we'll move on again, Willie.
Yeah, thanks very much. Take you on to item nine, national fraud initiative. Again, it's a report by Executive Director of Corporate Services, which is for noting.
Thanks, convener. This is a similar report, just providing an update and we'll take any questions you may have.
See that there's any questions getting posted. So is this agreed? Agreed then. Willie?
Yeah, thanks. Take you on to item 10, council plan progress report. This was remitted back to this committee by the Policy and Resources Committee for further consideration.
Anyone got any questions on this report? Is this report agreed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, convener. And the remaining item before is item 11, risk management review of policy and strategy. This was remitted to this committee by the City Governance Committee for consideration.
Any questions on that? Have you got the answers at the last break? Okay, that would appear to be the business finished unless you tell me otherwise, Willie.
Thanks, convener. That's all the business. Thank you.
You close the meeting then, that'll be fine. Nice to see you all. See yous later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, convener. Cheers. Bye.